Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two virtual session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Andrew Leon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Preschlag.
Here.
Alderman Gash Garian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Someone asked.
Mary.
How often do kids recognize?
Hey, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need to make the following statement. In accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID- nineteen pandemic, which is why this January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting will be held remotely. The first item on the agenda is report of city officers, comments by the mayor. First, we have a board and commission appointment. Appointing Jeffrey Hansen, Award Two, to the Historic Preservation Commission. I would entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Commission appointments and reappointments.
Done, moved.
On a second.
Second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlag.
Hi.
Alderman Gash Garian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
For child, which might be their only exposure. Eight, yay, zero, nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Quick, quick comment on issue that's been out there for a couple of months. There has been some concern about a tactic that is being used in the litigation that we are currently involved in where people who participated in public comment were actually named as defendants in the lawsuit. And that was done under a product rather obscure state statute that in effect seems to almost require it. It's not, it's not good for general public discourse, in my opinion, and so we're going to be working with various municipal organizations with which we are affiliated to see what we can do. This is a state statute to see if there's anything that can be done to clarify or improve this this language in the state statutes. I don't know if this is a new approach that you know, the attorneys are using around the state. I'm not aware of it having happened before, and this isn't the first situation like this we've ever been in, but this is, to my knowledge, the first time anything like this has happened. We don't want to chill the public debate. We don't want to chill the market, for lack of a better word, for volunteers and, you know, in our city government, and I think this quirk in the state statutes is being used in a way that probably wasn't intended, so we'll be working on that going forward, seeing if there's some progress that can be made there. It probably won't affect us in this immediate case, but it can hopefully help in the future, so. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager. Jason?
Great job. Thank you, Mayor, and then members of the city council. Good evening. I'm pleased tonight to introduce in tonight's community spotlight, Tom McAfee, the president of Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital, and Seamus Collins, the vice president of operations for Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital. It's really been some time since the city council in the community has heard an update from the hospital, and it's hard to believe that this spring, we're coming up on the four-year anniversary of the new facility opening to the public, and looking back, it's certainly very fortunate timing for our community that the hospital opened when it did. It's difficult to really imagine moving through the pandemic over the last two years without the improvements that were made to that hospital and the resource that it's become for the community. So tonight, Tom and Seamus are here really to bring us up to date on recent activity at the hospital, to look at some of the challenges and accomplishments over the last couple of years and to give a look forward for the campus into the future. So with that, Tom and/or Seamus, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me. It's nice to see everybody and thank you for giving us a little time this evening to update you on what's been happening at a wonderful hospital. I'm joined this evening with Seamus Collins. Seamus is Vice President of Operations at Lake Forest and the North Region of the Health System. I've had the privilege of working with Seamus. He goes back about a part of ten years where we worked together after he finished his training, his graduate training, was a fellow down at Northwestern Memorial and helped drive the growth of the physician primary care platform. So worked in the north and helping build our primary care delivery system, and then several years later, about five years ago, in fact, we were able to successfully recruit Seamus to come up and be based at Lake Forest and help us drive, you know, not only the opening of the new hospital, but also executing on the vision that we had in really building Northwestern medicine that exists today in the community. So, Seamus, I think you might be driving. Can you take us to the next slide, please?
Yeah, I think I am.
So we thought this evening we would provide maybe a quick update on what's happening in our world. It's obviously the elephant in the room, COVID- nineteen, so we thought we'd give you a little insight on some of our observations as we move through that that the pandemic. Also, a little background on the update on how we've progressed through the master plan that we as a team worked together on. Geez, I think it's a better part of a decade ago. And then the latest accomplishments in completing elements of that plan, and then Seamus will carry us forward into some of the future elements that we anticipate seeing on the campus as we move forward with our, with our, with our planning work. Next slide, please, Seamus. So this is a graphic of the hospital or health systems experience of COVID that goes back two years now. So on the x-axis, this time, roughly a two-year period, the darker colored purple line is Lake Forest Hospital. The pinkish line is our CDH Hospital, which is in the western suburbs, and then the green line is Northwestern Memorial Hospital down in Streeterville, our sister in the city, and can give you a sense of how our patient volume or this, the y-axis is admissions into the hospital during these periods of time. And you could see there's really three distinct waves that occurred. The first wave, you can see the relative distance between Lake Forest and Northwestern Memorial, which is a hospital that's probably a platform of roughly eight times the size of Lake Forest, really took a pretty significant hit in COVID volume early on. In fact, if you recall, I believe Lake County was one of the top ten counties in the country with the prevalence of COVID. We saw a little relief over time, and then another wave, you know, following. But what's been interesting is if you look to the far right, when you look to where Lake Forest is today, and you're to carry that line all the way to the left, you'll see that we've peaked over even the first previous waves. Now, the good news is that, you know, we learned a lot over those two years together with with our colleagues in the city and throughout the system, were able to deploy state-of-the-art protocols and and leverage the expertise of scientists and technology and capability that I think a few of my peers would have in the country. But, you know, one of the things that we benefited from was an incredible amount of focus in the first wave. If you recall, a lot of the clinical activity in our hospitals was decanted. Many patients elected not to come out of fear into hospitals, so emergency rooms really utilization dropped down, even our ancillary volumes dropped off precipitously. You know, as we move through these waves, though, the backlog of activity and the need for these patients to come and have their care, their healthcare needs met, started to increase. So what's unique about this latest wave, and you've certainly read about it and heard about it in the news, is that it was a unique challenge because not only was it a significant increase in patient volume, but we didn't have that concentration of just COVID cases. We had enormous amount of of activity, and because of the timing this year with the last quarter of the year, we also had a lot of year-end activity because of high deductible healthcare plans and the like, a lot of surge volume coming into the hospital. At the same time, we also had a pretty significant increase in infections in the community and with our employees. So we also saw a unique challenge in being able to provide the necessary support staff at the same time of having this surge of volume, and just the fatigue that you've read about is all real. I have to say that, you know, looking back and knowing where we are today, I couldn't be more proud to have, you know, been a team member, a leader in an organization that's responded the way we have. I could tell you that, you know, the thousand-plus employees that have been focused on delivering care in our bedside here for the last two years have just been unbelievably committed and dedicated to making sure that our community is kept safe. Now, the good news is that if you look to the right, you could start to see a drop. The positivity testing has dropped off. Our volumes have started to step down, knock on wood. It's real new. It's only been within the last week or so. I would say that we started to see a, some relief. We were up to around in the seventies, seventy inpatients, so probably around seventy percent of our of our inpatient platform had COVID cases. We have now seen that drop down by about, well, I think we were in the mid-fifties this morning, so definitely moving in the right direction, and we've also gotten a lot of relief and flexibility afforded to us by the system in bringing us additional resources as we manage this together. So ninety-nine percent of our staff is vaccinated, so we're pleased to know that's the case, and we're also seeing less of our staff out of the hospital and quarantine, which is also obviously very important to make sure that we can staff our patients on a daily basis. So that's what's been happening with COVID. Well-cared-for, great outcomes, heavy surge, but, but, you know, we've managed it well. So perhaps maybe you can move into the next slide, Seamus. So what else has happened over the last several years? Well, you know, as, you know, Jason had mentioned, believe it or not, next two weeks from now will be twelve years as Northwestern medicine. A lot has happened. If you were to even think about where we were then and where we are today, I can't imagine more change to the institution. But I'll tell you, I couldn't feel also more confident in the quality and capability of healthcare that's delivered in our community today. There's a few examples up here that are noted about how we've advanced our clinical capability. These are capabilities afforded to us by the Bloom Cardiovascular Institute. It's a group of cardiology expertise that's been brought through Northwestern's relationship to Lake Forest and the region, and really has stepped up our capability of doing minimally invasive surgical approaches, the transcarotid artery revascular, revascularization, or T-Car, is an advanced procedure that's allowing us to, through a minimally invasive approach, insert a stent in a carotid artery, keeping a patient from having a stroke. Again, capabilities that you wouldn't expect to see in a community hospital of our size, and also one of the first in the, in the market and and also, you know, applying the expertise, you know, that's premiered down at our Northwestern Memorial Hospital. What's really nice about these types of procedures also is because we built the platform, even down to the ORs that have been identical to those that are, that have been constructed at Northwestern Memorial, having identical IT platforms today, which has also been an investment over the years. Even our recent addition to our radiology PAC system so that images are moved back and forth across the enterprise allows us to deploy new technology and capability in a way where we can leverage the expertise downtown, model experiences, and then apply them up in our community. So great capability also now afforded, not just the physical plant, but the technology and the expertise now available to our community. Next slide, please. Externally, also being recognized as providing exceptional care, we're pleased to announce that we're ranked number thirteen in Chicagoland. I'm out of the state with more than a hundred and forty hospitals, nationally ranked in pulmonology and lung surgery, which is pretty phenomenal, given our scale, and also high performing in a variety of subspecialty areas, as noted on the top left of this slide. We recently completed our third magnet designation. That is the international gold standard for nursing excellence, and really pleased to have that reinforced with a survey in the midst of a pandemic. In fact, I think we are one of the first hospitals to have a virtual survey with, with a effectively a Teams, mobile Teams module or Zoom module used during that survey. You could see many other designated entities recognizing Lake Forest and Northwestern for the quality of care, and what's worth noting here is that with the capability of being ranked, the nursing excellence that's afforded with the resources that we have available because of our generosity in our community and the technology and the physical plant, it's really allowed us to recruit incredible talent. So, for example, Dr. Maggie Mueller, I believe, has just recently started. She's coming out of UCSF, a minimally robotic-trained general surgeon that has got expertise in minimally invasive procedures, just wonderfully talented person that can apply state-of-the-art minimally invasive surgical techniques at the hospital. Dr. Michael Schreiber, finishing up his fellowship at Northwestern Memorial, an incredible researcher, number one downtown, also was able to retain him through our relationship to advance additional expansion of subspecialty capability in oncology, and the list goes on. And it's not just people, it's the impact it has on lives. In June of this year, we had a poor child that presented in our emergency room that had had a significant head injury through a fall. Unfortunately, the helicopter wasn't in a position to be used because of weather, so through our collaboration with Dr. Jones and Dr. Michael Walsh, two of our neurosurgeons, they collaborated with our colleagues at Lori and downtown and determined that this child really needed to have surgery in an emergent fashion at Lake Forest. So though we don't normally do pediatric neurosurgery, these neurosurgeons were able to intervene with our team. We had fellowship-trained pediatric anesthesiologists as well, and as a result, we were able to decompress the pressure on this child's brain and, and really the patient had a fantastic outcome. That type of capability and resources now available in the community really is making enormous difference. Next slide, please. So I talked a little bit about our capability and our advances and the way that we've managed through even something like a pandemic, that's something we could have never dreamed of, but I could tell you that this beautiful hospital also handled the pandemic in an unbelievably efficient way. One of the principles that we deployed when we built this hospital is that of flexibility, and the interventional platform, which sits on the Granger interventional platform on the first floor of this building, was designed for enormous flexibility, and it allowed us to support the surge of patient volumes that we've experienced over the last several years. In fact, since we've opened, we've seen continued growth in our inpatient census. And so, you know, the hospitals perform beautifully. It is obviously a beautiful facility, as this picture and everyone knows, it's really proven to be an incredible asset, and the coming together of the community, the city, and the talent that's at this institution really have, you know, put us up to a whole different level. It's a very tranquil environment. I could tell you that when I go and meet with Seamus, it's not unusual that I'll see a red-tailed hawk fly by the window, so it's really wonderful to see the improvements on the aesthetic as well. Next slide, please. The campus, one of the things, if you recall, when we engaged Pelly Clark Pelly into this community in advancing this important project, one of the first things that they referenced was that the landscape in which this hospital sat was as important as the architectural aesthetic that we were advancing. And, you know, we really took that to heart, worked closely with our open lands colleagues in the city of Lake Forest and many other committed individuals in the community to help assure that this campus was truly a destination for health and wellness, and it was a campus that would embrace the community. Well, you know, fast forward, we've built a lead silver designated hospital. We've planted more than six hundred trees, over seven thousand feet of trails, and also several gardens, so it's really come together as we've continued to work to heal the campus. Sixty-five percent of the campus is open land and preserved for green space. That excludes parking lots and things like that, so we're really pleased with the conclusion of the first wave of expansion that we, that we, the first wave of expansion or phase of expansion that we have on the campus. Next slide, please. So I had mentioned continued increase in volume. Well, of course, you know, this project was a heavy capital investment for the community and one that we wanted to make sure that we could demonstrate maximum utilization. The picture to the right is a architectural graphic floor plan, if you will, of the inpatient platform, first floor. To the far right is the building that I'm in right now on the second floor. That is the, that is the used pavilion. And then the structure is, you probably recall, pinwheels to the south of the series of five pavilions. The interventional platform that I was referencing is in the larger block between the two purple sections, and that is the area that we've accommodated many, thank you, Seamus, many of the of the alternative care spaces and been able to accommodate the surge of volume that we've experienced over the last few years with COVID, but also in overall just general increased utilization of the hospital. I'd mentioned that because of the minimally invasive technology, the talent that we've brought in, the strength of the brand and the patient's experience, we've continued to have a higher capture of our market in our community, so more and more Lake Forest, Lake Bluffers and surrounding community are receiving their care, and because of the capability, more of that care, complex care is being delivered at our hospital, so much so that we really were forced into a situation where we needed to add additional overnight capacity into the hospital. Those two purple areas are one in the Hunter Pavilion, to the far left, F-one, was adjacent to the emergency room. We fit out twelve beds in that space and in the ambulance, and one of the ambulance base, which allowed us to have more flexibility with expanding our emergency room and overnight demand associated with many of the patients that originate in that end of the building. The B-one unit is also another twelve-bed unit that came online. We're able to relocate our cardiac rehab facility up to our Grace Lake Campus, and we're able to add twenty-four more beds, but even despite that, the volume of patients has continued to demonstrate that we need to plan for the next phase of evolution on the campus. I could tell you that during the last few years, we've been focused, we've built an engineering team to make sure that throughput and efficiency in the hospital was maximized because, you know, again, the cost and investment associated with expanding the platform is enormous, and we want to make sure that we can be good stewards of the asset that we have invested in so far. So with that, I'd like to have Seamus take us forward with some of the thoughts we have on how we look to solve that problem and continued our fees deployment of the evolution of the campus. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. You know, I think, I think that background is, is great to set up this, this next part of the conversation in terms of where do we think we go from here to continue to provide healthcare to this community? And, you know, I think a good place to start is looking back at the land use plan for Lake Forest Hospital, which was approved back in two thousand and twelve and then updated again in two thousand and sixteen, and that plan contemplated the development of this campus in three phases. And you can see those phases here listed on this slide. You know, phase one of this project really organized the campus in a way to support state-of-the-art medicine and efficient delivery of healthcare as well as community engagement and sustainability. And in addition to the new hospital, which I think it really is the crown jewel of that first phase of development, it also set up a pathway for us to continue to grow and develop. It also set up some nice design principles that we really live by. You know, as Tom mentioned earlier, sixty-five percent of the campus will remain green, and that's a general principle that, that wants to locate this campus as a place of health, a place of wellness, a place of community engagement going forward. We've also used that phase to make improvements to access and support objectives that were helpful to the city as well, that includes improvements to stormwater management with also reductions to traffic burden on Deer Path Road. Phase two of the project focused primarily on healing the campus once the establishment of the new hospital and once operations in the new building had settled into really a stabilized place. Phase two also incorporated removal of the old hospital, an establishment of a central roadway to help support ongoing operations on the campus, and also began to contemplate what structured parking might look like as volumes continue to increase at Lake Forest Hospital. And then phase three of the project provided guidance on what that future growth looked like, and as Tom alluded to, it's, it's at this time that we believe really that expansion to the hospital building here highlighted in red and structured parking highlighted here in red also are what's needed to best support the healthcare of this community. And luckily, we feel that, you know, this is, this is both steps that we're ready to take with Northwestern medicine, and it's also called out here in the approved plan, so we're really modeling and proceeding in a manner that, that really was set into place almost a decade ago. You know, and as we approach this fourth anniversary of the new hospital and look back over ten years since initiating this modernization projects, you know, we're grateful for the support that the community has shown us. I think the process for constructing this hospital has been incredibly thoughtful and patient, and included steps for us to check in and establish a partnership with the city and the community that surrounds us. You know, we were able to seek out, we received, we incorporated input from the community throughout the whole process, not, not only in erecting the new hospital, but also in how we honored the old, the old hospital building. The hospital advisory committee, which was appointed in two thousand and twelve, facilitated input into the design process, and then the legacy plan that was established after activation of the current hospital helped us advise on how best to honor that old building going forward. And moving forward, our plan is to build upon these approvals, build upon these processes and partnerships that have been very successful for us over the past decade to grow and continue to deliver high-quality healthcare to the Lake Forest community. And with that is when we really look ahead to our next objective, which is to bring incremental acute care beds to this community as we, as quickly as possible. Since opening the new hospital back in two thousand and eighteen, we've been optimizing our operations to make the best use of the space that we have available to us, as Tom pointed out, one example in which we do that. And we've also forecasted continued growth that began well before the COVID- nineteen pandemic, and we expect to continue after as well. We have engaged Pelly Clark and Partners, as well as Smith Group, to be architects for the project, and have convened leaders throughout Northwestern Medicine to begin the designing, the next wave of campus expansion, which will include expanded inpatient capacity to the southeast of the parking structure, as shown on the master campus plan slide, and also structured parking to better support an optimal patient experience for those who visit our community. We anticipate that construction activity on this campus is forecasted to begin by the end of this year with groundbreaking of the parking garage and will end with new acute care capacity by December, two thousand and twenty-five, is our current timeline. And so, you know, we're very excited to begin this journey, to continue what's been a very successful partnership with the Lake Forest community to bring this expanded capability to the city.
So I believe that's the last slide. We'd welcome, Seamus, and I would welcome any questions you might have for us.
You know, I have a question. Tom and Seamus, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Just out of curiosity, if you could enlighten the rest of us, we know as we move forward with expansion as set forth in the previous plans that have been approved by council, there's something that's called a certificate of need that's required to have expansion. So in other words, in some communities where they might not need additional hospital beds, which my understanding it's at a cost of about a million dollars per bed in terms of a capital commitment. And one of the metrics that they rely upon is your daily census. Approximately, where are we with that? And maybe you could shed some more light on that. Obviously, we know with the the peak of the pandemic, we're going to be at maximum utilization, but off-peak, where has the hospital been functioning at?
Yeah, we, it's a very good question, Alderman Gash Garian. There is a health facility planning board, the only health facility planning board, there's a certificate of need. There is a health facility planning board, the only health facility planning board, there's a certificate of need process where you have to demonstrate with with utilization and statistics, given the the market, what portion of the market you may sit. How are the hospitals handling the volume of of patients in that area? Impacts of of changes on safety net institutions, things like that have to be addressed as part of that application process. We do have a team that has been looking at that for some time. Our utilization is often in excess of 90% occupied, and that's on average. So, you know, what we've been able to do is handle with alternative care spaces in the building utilizing the interventional platform to support those patients. But at the end of the day, those spaces were really configured to support the throughput and needs of the interventional platform, the ORs, the MRIs, the CTs, the cath labs and the like. So really, that's not a really great sustainable model under that situation. And when we take into consideration the changing demographics, our our market shift and overall forecasted volumes for what we do, it'll continue to press us. So the good news is early indication is that that given our utilization, we should be able to justify these these incremental beds that we'll be asking for.
Fantastic. Thank, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. It was very helpful. Enjoyed it very much. Thank you.
And Seamus, just to just to dovetail on that, I remember three and a half years ago when I was having my youngest son and my doctor said, Eileen, can you hold off tonight because the hospital's full? There's really no room. And so I I know through a lot of my constituents and with the huge growth of, you know, quote unquote, young people, but people who have young families moving to Lake Forest, I can only anticipate that the need for, you know, high end Northwestern Hospital, Lake Forest, to have the ability to to be able to accept those patients as they come needing service.
Yeah, thank you. You know, the the utilization of the hospital, if you're pressing in the 90s or above, really is not optimal from an efficiency standpoint either. I mean, you'll have obviously variance in 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 utilization, depending on the time of year and the day of the week. But we really do believe that that once, once these these beds are brought online, it'll it'll reduce the temperature and create a much more friendly environment for our community at large. We hate to be in a situation where we're putting patients in suboptimal spaces, especially during some of the high stress times of their lives. Plus, we want the best environment for our staff to be able to apply their their expertise.
Thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Jennifer, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I was muted. I I was saying that I have, I do have a question and then I have a request. The question is, Tom, you said that the pandemic was something we could have never dreamed of. And I I think we all couldn't agree with that statement more. So I'm wondering now, given where we are two years into this, after, I mean, once hopefully this dust has 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 settled, what what kind of education do you think that the hospital community and our community can be doing to, you know, continue to educate residents on the possibility of unfortunately another situation like this?
You know, it's it's a, it's a, it's a tough question. You know, I think we've all learned an enormous amount, both, you know, just the the management of this, this, this bug. But even just the 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 whole environmental dynamic, the impact it has on on our workforce over time, the fatigue element, just and and some of the other, you know, who could have forecasted the decisive divisiveness of some of the elements associated with just taking care of patients? I think that we as a team have come together more tightly. You know, the resources that are available through a large integrated academic system have been, you know, incredibly valuable from like, for example, you know, the the screens that we're on right now that we kind of take for granted and being able to communicate. You know, we've been using this as a as an executive team across the entire enterprise and leveraging the expertise within the health system. But, you know, one of the things that we are constantly doing is revisiting our experience and see how we might be able to improve our responsiveness in the future, you know, given a similar circumstance, because you're right, this is not going to be the last pandemic. You know, pandemics have been with, you know, mankind since inception, right? I think that, you know, the fact that we got up and close and personal with this one, I think, you know, changed probably all our views on infection control, things that, you know, I think masking will be much more prevalent in our in our industry, you know, moving forward. I think some of the benefits of it, reducing some other, you know, incidence of disease in in our community or hospital has been pretty significant. So, for example, flu was almost, you know, non-existent last year. RSV almost disappeared, you know, now, you know, so far, knock on wood, flu hasn't come back with significant inventions this year, thank God, but RSV has. So, so I think we are learning as an organization and will apply some of that experience. We've also are right now, to be honest, working closely on on how to take care of our workforce coming out of this. You've probably read about this PTSD type of experience in our industry. You know, when you put our staff or any hospital staff, for that matter, through the stress that we've experienced over the last few years, you know, flipping the switch and going straight back to normal is probably not realistic. So one of the things that we're doing is is some cutting edge work in engaging some of our researchers and and talent to help us figure out exactly how to, you know, make sure that the the health and well-being of our workforce is well positioned so that the next time we do have an anticipated surge like this, that we're better prepared to to respond to that in that regard. You know, Seamus, I don't know if you have any thoughts from your perspective on this, on the question.
Yeah, Tom, you know, I think you're right. I think we're, you know, we're we're benefited by our close relationship with the university that that spends a lot of time thinking about this, not only thinking about, you know, how to care for those with COVID, but but also thinking about the public health aspects of it. And, you know, I know if we had the answers on how to educate the community to 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 handle this going forward, I think we'd solve a lot of problems in the world. I think we know some of the answers that we continue to to promote as as much as we can and continue to to try to be here for the community. I think one of the things that we've learned is, you know, when when you enter a pandemic already at a high occupancy for the hospital, it becomes challenging to manage. And and our patients experienced in our emergency departments in suboptimal patient care spaces. And I think, you know, when we look forward, we really want to make sure that we are establishing a platform that that meets all of the needs of of the community in terms of their healthcare needs, elective and emergent. And and we're looking forward to to building a platform that allows us to do that.
Thank you so much. On, so my request is, you talked about the hospital being a destination for health wellness and community engagement. And I think I'm the chairman of our marketing committee and along with Dana Olson, who is our communications manager, I think it would be great for us to sit down with someone at the hospital to better understand what those what those destinations are, so we can, you know, maybe, you know, think about how we can communicate that you know, to you during using our vehicles to the residents of Lake Forest.
We'd be delighted to to host a conversation on that. In fact, we'd be excited.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I had the privilege of spending a significant amount of time in your fair institution on Sunday and yesterday with my 95 year old mother-in-law. And also she was there before Christmas or right after Thanksgiving for a few days. And, you know, it was, I know there were challenges for sure, but you guys got through it and it was, it was definitely a crowded house, no question about it. So thank you for that. All all turned out fine.
Wonderful.
Alderman Rommel.
Oh, when we're talking about patient volume, are there plans for expansion of other Northwestern University hospitals throughout the county? Lindenhurst or, you know, anything north of us? Or are they building any new facilities that might provide a bit of a relief valve for Lake Forest?
Alderman Rommel, it's a next question. In fact, one of the things that we have done that I kind of jumped over is we've really looked to try to load balance demand for patient care across all of all of Northwestern. In fact, we're not the only member of the family to to have capacity to kind of challenges. Our sister hospital, Northwestern Memorial, has had a similar experience for for several years. We are adding outpatient expansion. You probably noticed the the location in Lake Bluff, which is a new immediate care center that is near operational and a family medicine program also in that building. We have expanded our Grace Lake Campus, expanded hours and the operating capability. So we've expanded the technology as well, you know, in several facilities, including the Evanston facility just came online as well as our Glen, our Glenview location, the Glen, which is a large outpatient facility. So looking to decant as much volume so that only the higher acuity cases that require inpatient utilization are based at Lake Forest. But the bed platform itself and the requirements for overnight stay really are concentrated at Lake Forest. It, at this point, we're have the ability to to accommodate some overnight capability up at Grace Lake, but but not enough to justify, you know, a an inpatient platform of any sort. And I I don't anticipate seeing that anytime in the near future either.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, thank you, Tom and Seamus. Nice presentation. It's all, it's all good, except for this pandemic thing, which we all love to see go away. But I guess sometimes necessity being the mother of invention, being under under pressure like this, probably ups your game a bit, so.
I couldn't agree more. The team definitely came together and I'd just like to say on behalf of Northwestern Medicine, thank you. You know, for your advocacy or support, the community has been phenomenal in every regard. And for your patience, you know, given the, you know, the unique circumstance, it's not been optimal, but but I think that the team is just, you know, risen to the occasion and and we've learned a lot and have grown stronger together. So so thank you all and and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you about Tom and Seamus. And before I turn it back to you, Mayor, I think it'd be timely opportunity in keeping with tonight's theme to give a little plug for next Thursday, an event being hosted by the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Chamber of Commerce. It is a virtual event that is being held to discuss and provide updates on the continuing impact of the pandemic and any future concerns. And we're very fortunate, I say we as a as a member of the chamber board, to have two special guests joining in that event. One is Dr. Jeffrey Copan, who is the chief medical officer for the North, Northwestern Memorial Healthcare. He has participated in some past virtual Q and A events. And he will be joined as a panelist by Mark Pfister, the executive director for the Lake County Health Department. So two obviously very knowledgeable and timely individuals that will, that the community will have an opportunity to hear from. So to the council and to the community, if you have the, you know, the opportunity to attend the event virtually, I encourage you to do so. Information should be up on the city's website. I know it's certainly available on the chamber's website and we will push out communications to the public in our weekly e-news blast and perhaps on social media as well this Friday.
Great, thank you. Yeah, that that I'm looking forward to that. That should be very interesting. If I get editorialized for just a second here before we move on, Jason touched on this very briefly in his initial comments, but can any of us imagine, can anybody in Lake Forest imagine going through the last two years with the old hospital? And just think about that. There is a need for progress. We cannot resist everything. And this is a perfect example. This was resisted by a number of people. And thankfully, city councils saw through that, saw the long-term benefits and moved forward. Lesson learned. Next item is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Do we have any, let's see, you can call 847-810-3643 or use the raised hand function. We'll wait a minute here while we
Mr. Mayor, we will call us at this time. Sorry about that, Leila. Mr. Mayor, we do have one raised hand. It is Rami Lopez.
Good.
One minute, we'll bring you in.
Hi, good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Rami Lopez. Stavou, can I ask you a question? Can you see me or am I not on camera?
No, we see your name.
Just my name. Okay, thank you very much. I want to say that I totally appreciate, Mr. Mayor, that the city will pursue remedies at the legislative level regarding the the vagueness of the Illinois Administrative Review Act under which I and quite a number of other fellow citizens and residents of Lake Forest were sued by a by a local developer. That's fantastic. And I also hope that you'll clarify that that you'll also be looking at the Illinois Public Participation Act, because that too leaves us adrift with regard to whether we can, we can get reimbursed for our legal fees if we are not sued for financial damages. You, as as I, as I stated in my email to the city council, my email of last Friday, to get dismissed from this lawsuit cost me $2,600. Actually, it was more than that. All of you are are covered as a municipal corporation, but we residents are not. So that does send a very chilling effect to testifiers and volunteers for our commissions. My private insurance, I have personal liability insurance did not cover this instance because I was not sued for damages. Unlike, you know, having my crashing my car into someone or something like that, not covered. Illinois, the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation organizations were likewise likewise not covered. So this has created a problem and you are, you have just committed to to seeing it through at the legislative level, but that's a long-term solution. And I'm, I'm wondering what the short term message is to all of us or the solution is for for those of us who take part in in our First Amendment rights and civic participation. And I would, I would ask the city council to respond to us to say that that there is a responsibility here. If you're expecting us to testify and take positions on on projects in our town, then indemnify our testimony. I I don't see another way around that. And I certainly hope the legal committee will address this and and take it up very seriously. I had in my email to you, I had four points. There are three others that were not addressed by you, Mr. Mayor. And I think they're also terribly important. One is to correct the inconsistencies in our own city code with regard to the removal of non-officers. Those are commissioners of the city. In fact, there's no, the only word in the city code is officers. So so even that is a definitional problem, but but we can be removed. I'm a commissioner. We can be removed for all kinds of reasons, and none of these commissions have the same reason. The HBC has two reasons. And and one of them is is ethics, but one of them is not conduct. Third, it's not an OMS violation, although we've been told that it is to email fellow commissioners as a group as long as it appears that from the Illinois State's Attorney, and this I learned from the lawsuit, that as long as we don't get a response, it's not a meeting. So we should clarify that. I should not have to send to staff and then have staff blind copy, which certainly appears to be a non-transparency issue. And last, precisely defined for all of us what expertise actually means. I think it's being used sadly as a way of intimidation rather than making sure that both parties understand what's going on in any on any petition. And so those are, I will help there. I I hope that that you will send these things to the legal committee. I I I think we all, those of us who got sued, all stand ready to to offer our experiences to the state legislature, to your legal committee, to the city council as a whole and and help in any way we can so this unfortunate thing can be situation can be avoided in the future. Same developer come forward once again. So so this is, this is an important issue for all of us. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight. I'll answer any question.
Any other callers? I'm sorry, I did thank the caller. She just couldn't hear me, nor could anybody else, but any other callers or raised hands?
Do not see any raised hands at this time.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are five. Short night. First is approval of December sixth, twenty twenty one, city council meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in, I do believe we had a great.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I got out of sequence. I'm sorry. The next item is a report from the Public Works Committee Committee Reports. I apologize. I guess Jim Lockaffier will Assistant Director of Public Works is going to be presenting an update on the Deer Path Streetscape.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. I did prepare. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Just a few short slides on the topic for this this evening. And starting with some background information. And before I jump in here, when we reference the Deer Path Streetscape project, specifically the limits, and it's actually better outlined here on on the cover slide. This is a portion of Deer Path from Oakwood Avenue to Western Avenue. And so with my chart here of of milestones, I do apologize. I recognize it's it's very text heavy with a lot of detail, and I'll do my best to to move through it quickly. But as I was putting it together, I I wanted to include all this information because I think it tells a very good story of where we are and where we've been with this project. This, this is a project that's been supported by some significant processes as well as significant stakeholder involvement. So so with that, starting with, you know, back in twenty sixteen through twenty eighteen, the project really started to gain gain traction at the city's civic beautification committee level, where that group really spent a lot of time looking at this area and started to develop some conceptual planning efforts. At the end of twenty eighteen, Civic Beautification Committee actually formalized those those planning ideas, all those efforts in a project conceptual plan. Naturally, then from there, and only a few months later, the conversation then transitioned to how do we move forward with with funding the the design and construction of the project? And at that time, April of twenty nineteen, that was a PW committee discussion. And ultimately, the PW committee supported the city moving forward with funding a hundred percent with local city funds, phase one design. And then from there, recognized that with some other competing capital needs, that this would be a good good project to seek some outside funding. And that that recommended opportunity that that staff came forward with was the state's ITAP program, which is the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. And specifically, that program has a dedicated streetscape category for which we could apply. And and that was for phase two design and construction funding. Another attractive thing about that opportunity is is the fact that it's eighty percent state money with a twenty percent local match. With that direction, we move forward that late summer of twenty nineteen. Staff brought first to the Public Works Committee, and then it was ultimately approved by city council, the Phase One Design Agreement, which was with Key Walt Hamilton Engineering and Craig Bergman Landscape Design. And then I think I think it was about a week or two later when city manager Wisha formed the Deer Path Streetscape Ad hoc Advisory Committee, which was that their purpose was to guide that Phase One Design Process. Recognizing there are a lot of various interest groups that that had a lot of specific interest. We had some great representation from city council, other various city boards and commissions, the Chamber of Commerce, property owners along that portion of Deer Path Streetscape, as well as the Historic Preservation Foundation. That group led, it was truly over a year long effort that included citywide public engagement efforts. And after those efforts, the committee continued to meet numerous times to truly review all public comment received. As that public comment was being reviewed, the committee ultimately formed a final project recommendation report, which which truly detailed out all the recommendations. And I I would encourage anyone, any resident interested in this project to to check that out. It is available to the public on the city's website. The full report can be downloaded. It's incredibly detailed, and all the recommendations are further supported by illustrations as well as an overall aerial plan. After the completion of that that committee project recommendation report, the the next step was truly submitting some phase one documentation to the state, as well as staff did submit our ITAP application seeking that phase two design funding and construction funding. Took a little while to hear back. It wasn't until this past summer, early summer, June twenty twenty one, when we did receive notification from IDAP that unfortunately, this project was unsuccessful in receiving an award. Very disappointed, but we we quickly transitioned to setting up a meeting with the head ITAP program manager. And and when I say we, that not only included staff, but also the Ferguson Group, the grant research firm that was reviewed by Director Hollub earlier this evening as part of the Finance Committee. They also joined us on this on this call and this application debrief. And what was great was, although we didn't receive that award, we received some really encouraging feedback. We were close. Our, we were just, we were only a few points away from receiving funding and found out multiple ways to improve our application. But most significantly, we found out that had our project been further along, specifically completed the phase two design process, or at least had started it, we would have gained some additional points that would have put us right up there with receiving an award. So with that, then staff did form a recommendation to to move forward with, again, let's take that next step, locally funding phase two design. And then let's try again submitting an ITAP grant application for construction. There, the next state ITAP cycle is this fall where what what we're ultimately aiming for. And then most recently, these last two, this past November, Finance Committee did review the phase two design budget as part of that large, that that CIP budget meeting. And then only a few days ago, the Public Works Committee did review and recommend city council approval of the phase two design agreement, which is on the omnibus agenda this evening, where we are seeking city council's approval. And so with that, just where we're moving forward quickly, staff and the PW committee are recommending that we award phase two design to the Thomas Engineering Group with the Lakota Group. Thomas Engineering, it's in their title, they'll handle everything engineering related. And then the Lakota Group would provide that landscape architect support. If approved, Thomas and the Thomas and Lakota team will begin those phase two design efforts immediately. And part of that action that we're seeking from city council tonight is the advancement of fifty five thousand dollars. And that specifically, I'll just note really quickly is, and it's also detailed in the write up, that the the money available for for this project, it is FY twenty three capital improvement funds. And those funds obviously are available until the new fiscal year, which begins May one. And so to to get that team going and to put the strongest ITAP application together so that we can be as far along in the process as we can by the time fall comes around, we we do want them to get going immediately. And that money will will certainly help those efforts. And again, submitting that application fall of twenty twenty two. We anticipate, this isn't official, but just given the timeline from the last cycle, we would, we anticipate that IDAP would again announce the awards early summer of twenty twenty three. And if successful, hoping that we are, construction, we would then slate for spring of twenty twenty four. And so with that, happy to answer any questions. I know I shared a lot of information, but happy happy to answer any questions that council has.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Jim, thanks so much for the recap. I just wanted to comment, I know that the Civic Beautification Committee members also highly support moving forward with this. They've all voiced that at our last meeting and just in general conversation. Also, several garden club members aside have also noted to me that they are really looking forward to seeing this continue to move forward as a real gem and improvement enhancement to our beautiful downtown.
Any other questions or comments? You'll you'll see this come back again in about thirty seconds on the omnibus, so. If there are none other, no other questions, thank you, Jim. Good presentation. It is interesting, this project's, a lot of work is going into this project already, so. It's a pretty, pretty lengthy timeline, so probably time to move forward. I think we've all agreed on that, so. Okay, well, the next item on the agenda now is the omnibus vote items. There are five. First is approval of the December sixth, twenty twenty one, city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the check register for the period of November twenty seven to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Third is award of a bid for a three year elevator maintenance agreement to American Hoist and Man Lift in the amount of thirty eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Fourth is approval of construction assistance services for both the Illinois and Woodland Pedestrian Bridge Replacements to Wiss, Janie, Elsner Associates, and to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in an amount not to exceed thirty nine thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Fifth is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the Deer Path Streetscape Phase Two Project Design Proposal to Thomas Engineering Group in the amount of three hundred and seventy two thousand seven hundred and fifty eight dollars plus a ten percent contingency in the amount of thirty seven thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars for a total of four hundred and ten thousand thirty three dollars. And the advancement of fiscal year twenty twenty three capital improvement project funding in the amount of fifty five thousand dollars. Are there any of these items that any member of the council would like taken separately or removed? Okay, well, then I would entertain a motion to approve the five omnibus items as presented.
I'm moved.
Second. Hey, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Freshlack.
Hi.
Alderman Goshkarion.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. Joe Mobile Superintendent of Recreation is going to present information on loan agreement, proposed loan agreement between the City of Lake Forest and the American Legion McInlach Post two hundred and sixty four in the amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars or improvements to Veterans Park. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. And I've also asked Ed Garrity and Neil Lynch from the American Legion McInlach Post two sixty four to join me to further discuss the memorial as well as their fundraising campaign. But I'd like to start with just a brief overview. As we've all seen, the construction has begun at the corner of Green Bay and Deer Path at Veterans Park. On the right side of the slide is kind of the construction picture. Some of the key changes that you're going to notice are at the entrance. And as you've driven by recently, you see the, I believe it's the rebar sticking up that frames the initial corner element, which will be a flower bed. And then the brick wall has been broken apart, which will create the at the two new entrances off the corner. The existing brick wall is a little hard to tell on here, but you can kind of see a corner where the existing brick wall will remain and be cornered off to frame the two entrances. All of the excavation work has been done coming from the entrance back towards the the middle element, the middle white circle, which will be the location of the memorial. You know, with the cold weather setting in and with the snow, a lot of the work, if not all, has now been kind of put on hold until the spring. And once the weather breaks, they will be finishing the the masonry work, the paths. They'll lay a a base for where the monument or the memorial is going to go. Also be working on the irrigation, which would just be for the outer plant beds along the two roads. And we'll be running electrical so that, you know, in the future, we can host events or possibly, you know, a concert or a movie down the road. All that will be picked back up in the spring. Mag Construction is the company that's doing the work. And we are hoping that with the weather cooperating to have the estimated completion in May, so we can do a grand opening of Veterans Park itself Memorial Day Weekend of twenty twenty two. You know, we'll get into the the memorial, but that will be a separate dedication in twenty twenty three after it's designed and constructed. So but we do want to open the park once this phase of work is complete so that the community can enjoy it as the memorial is being built. So I'm here this evening. As we mentioned, we we've got a partnership with the American Legion Post. We're we're designing and developing the park, and they're going to be raising money to design and develop a memorial, which will include the initial flagpole from the original plans in the center of the park. So it'll be a nice focal point for the community and a great place for the residents to be able to go and honor and and pay tributes to the the fallen veterans of the past wars. The total estimated cost for the memorial is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The American Legion needs a deposit upfront to secure the granite that will be worked for the memorial. And the Legion Foundation has provided thirty seven five hundred, and they are asking the city for a loan in the amount of thirty seven five hundred dollars as well upfront. They will be undertaking a a fundraising campaign with the NCCU to raise funds for the memorial and then, you know, repay the loan back to the city by the end of twenty twenty three. So at this point, I will bring Ed and or Neil up, and they will talk about the actual memorial part, and then I'll come back for the final approval.
Not sure if they're.
Hi, hi. Two sixty four. If Ed is there, he be talking. The memorial of Highland Park. of Highland Park in the process for fiber to sign a contract with we're going to our collect $350,000 by May of 2023 in Memorial Day.
Neil, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think you're breaking up a bit on our end.
I don't know. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't know if it's the internet connection, but.
Okay, I'm I don't know what you heard. Here now?
I really we we really couldn't hear much of anything.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. So
Neil, you're you're still breaking up. Sorry.
The the Legion's, you can't hear me, can you?
Actually, now we can, but it seems like when you start speaking normally, it starts breaking up. Maybe give it one more try.
Okay. We're going to sign a contract with Timeless Creations, Inc. of Highland Park. And then we're going to do our fundraising in the of 2023 in Memorial Day, May 2023. Did you get that?
Sort of.
I I can try to summarize. Is so the the memorial is a American Legion project that they've agreed to take on to to benefit the park. They are signing a contract or have signed a contract with the Timeless Creations, Inc. They're located in Highland Park. And the artist that they've been working with is a gentleman named Gary Tillery. They are then going to begin a fundraising campaign to raise the $350,000. But they, you know, are asking for the 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 loan upfront because the granite for the memorial is actually being ordered and coming from India. So it takes a long leadway to get it here. And then they're hoping to have the monument finished and ready to install by Memorial Day 2023. And if not, we'll look at one of the other, you know, whether it's Fourth of July weekend or Veterans Day weekend in 2023, so that the memorial will finish out the development of the park then at that point.
Any questions from the council? Okay, well, if there are no questions, I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve the proposed loan.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschler.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarion.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to seeing this all come to fruition. It's it's exciting. It's it's about time Lake Forest had a some sort of a Veterans Memorial. We we don't have one of those here. It's it's a missing a missing link, so. So thanks, Ed. Thanks to Neil and Ed for joining us tonight. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Thank you, Joe, for filling in.
No, thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is additional items for discussion commenced by council members. Are there any council members that would like to speak about other matters? Okay, well, in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm on.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? But he's opposed. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Night.
Bye bye, bye bye, 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 bye.